Okay, call this meeting on one of those orders. Please, what's that?
Say no.
Oh, please rise for the pledge allegiance to my left. United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting is advertising Asper Park Press on Thursday, August 11, 2022, by posting a notice in the Fork River Post Office and on Oak Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy notice with the Lacey Tatcher Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. So roll call, Mr. Amato.
President.
Mrs. Claus.
Yeah.
Mr. Peters.
President.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Here.
Mrs. Downing.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
And myself, present. Okay, we're going to jump right over to the superintendent's report. Dr. Perre.
So welcome, everybody. So Kim reminded me that our last retreat was virtual. I didn't remember that.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's good to finally have one in person. So we're just going to get started right out of the gate with Kathy Friedman presenting.
Kathy.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann. I just confused you and Kathy Weincoff.
I get it.
Mary Ann Friedman.
I get it, and I get that a lot.
Yes, thank you. And you two were always together, so.
Because people were thinking Kathy's replacement, so it goes to Kathy and then.
Yes, thank you. But thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate coming. As Dr. Perre just said, I'm Mary Ann Friedman. I am your field service rep. I have always had most of Ocean County. Do you have anybody missing?
No. No board members. No board members here.
All board members are here, okay. So do you want, let me give you one for Sharon.
For Sharon.
One for Will. Take it.
Or sit down.
Okay, so as I said, I have always been, well, most recently, I've been the field service rep for Ocean County for 20 of the 28 districts in Ocean County, but I also had Mendelsex and Hudson County. And upon Kathy's departure, I was asked if I would take Monmouth County as well. So now I have Monmouth and all of Ocean. And as of July 25, Mendelsex and Hudson have gone to another person. So it's not been a hostile takeover of Monmouth and Ocean, the districts that I didn't have in Ocean before, but I'm very pleased to be here. And Kathy, I'm sure will send you her best. So the first thing that I wanted to do was go over the board's self-evaluation, and that's on the left-hand side of your packet. And then we'll, because this does set the table pretty nicely for goal setting. So the first thing that, and just also by way of introduction, I was on my board for nine years. Kathy and I were on the same board for seven of those nine years. She was on for a year before me. I was on for a year after her, so we shared seven years on the board together.
Which board were you on?
Most of Tatcher, Monmouth. And, but that's been a long time, because I came off the board in 2008, which is very hard for me to believe has been that long. So, but I enjoy, being on the board was something that was very gratifying. It is, I can tell you from experience, it is a thankless job. I think it's even more of a thankless job now. And I really give you all a lot of credit and my thanks for doing what you do, because when I was a board member up until 2008, 2008, social media was just coming kind of into play, and all of these other things were kind of coming into play. And so when I was on the board, we didn't have to deal with the things that you had been having to deal with, even aside from the pandemic, which is a whole other bucket of stuff that you've been dealing with. So just wanted you to know me a little bit better, so that you're familiar with me. So the first thing we ask you to do in the board's self-evaluation is look at the quantification of relative value. The thing that you need to know about the averages are that we consider anything to be a 3.0 or above is a board that's working effectively together. Okay? So the total averages of 3.0 or above is a board that's working effectively together. And you can see on the quantification of relative value, I kind of look at this, think of special ed. So you think about what somebody's ability is, and then you think of what their performance is in special ed. I think of the quantification of relative value as what you feel the ability is of the board, and then your board ratings about the board are what you feel your performance is. So keep that in mind, and we'll go over that when we go to the charts. But the two highest areas of relative value that you gave were student achievement and finance. And we know that all of these things are meshed together to be able to improve student achievement, but certainly student achievement being one of your highest areas, and finance being able to provide the resources that you need to provide that education for your students is very, very important. And you can interrupt me at any point during, along the way. So if you turn to the second page, which is planning, this was an area that was, that could be an opportunity for growth for you. Okay? So your area of strength here was with broad community input, establishing a district-wide vision, multi-year plan for education. You do have a five-year strategic plan that's still in place, I think, until '24 or '26?
'26.
'26, okay. So that's in place until 2026. So that is being worked on, and that is your multi-year plan for your educational system. And then one of the areas that could be a challenge for you and could be an opportunity for growth is regularly monitoring the progress towards the district goals. And when I spoke to Dr. Perre, I saw that your board goals, your district board and superintendent goals were all in one category, all in one last year. And I did recommend to Dr. Perre when I spoke to her that we break those out, so that you know what you're responsible for as a board, and you also know what Dr. Perre is responsible for in terms of district goals for her evaluation. Because remember, in the superintendent's evaluation, part of what you evaluate the superintendent on is progress towards the achievement of district goals. So my feeling was unless you have a system for being able to, you know, kind of determine and differentiate which goals are which and who's responsible for them, it could be confusing to figure out what you're evaluating the superintendent on and what you're evaluating yourselves on. So today, when we go into the goal-setting piece, we're going to, I'm going to talk to you about splitting that up into district goals and board goals. So it'll be two different buckets. Okay? Does that make sense? Okay. So, and then regularly monitoring the progress towards the district goals. So this is something you have in your packet on the left-hand side, a couple of pages back, I think, the board's, the evaluation process calendar. And what I think would be really wise for you to do is take that evaluation process calendar and look at it and see how often do we want to have updates on the progress towards the district goals? Because when you think about it, you have to start your evaluation of the superintendent pretty much in March, April at the very latest is when you should be doing that. Okay? So you're always evaluating the superintendent on progress, satisfactory progress towards those district goals. So you want to have updates sometime, say in November, to get you started, to see those action plans, then maybe in February or March, if you want to do three, you would do February or March. That way you would have your most recent update before Dr. Perre goes in and drops in her information into the CSA evaluation. So it's fresh in everybody's mind where you are with regard to the district goals, and then you could have another one in June to wrap up the year.
So what was the recommendation?
So November, then March, and then June.
And should this be done in a board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. And I would also encourage you, what one of my superintendents used to do is just put it in, remember this is before we had electronic packets, so I'm going backwards, kind of we don't have a source on the earth, but we had paper packets, and he would put the, he would put the update in an attachment at the back. Well, if you did your, if you were going through your board meeting minutes in your packet and everything, sometimes you didn't get all the way to the back. So I always recommend that the superintendent does, you know, 10, 15 minutes. It doesn't have to be a PowerPoint. It can just be, here's where we are. And as a board, what some of the things that you want to know is, say if the first one is November 1st, any timeframes that were supposed to be met by November 1st, did we meet those? If we didn't, how come? And if we didn't, when can we expect to meet those? So then you know you're on track. Then in March, you could do the same thing. Did we meet everything that we were supposed to meet by March 1st or whatever the timeframe is? And then, then you'll know that unless something like COVID happens, Ken.
Oh, maybe just think about.
Well, I didn't say it's not going to. That would be the wrong thing to say. But unless something dramatic happens or catastrophic happens, you'll know by March that you're on target to complete those goals, if everything's been met up until that point. Okay? So that's why those progress reports are really important. I'm also going to suggest to you, when you do the progress reports on the district, you as a superintendent, to do the progress reports on the district goals, that you give progress reports on the board goals, because otherwise they're very, very easy to forget. And you're taking the time to come in on a Monday at 1:30 in the afternoon for a couple of hours to get these, you know, knocked out, to develop these district and board goals. You want them to know that not only did you take the time today, but that you're focused on them throughout the year. Yes?
What I would find more effective is having the superintendent do the goals at the January meeting, because it seems every year we have new board members come on.
Okay.
And they don't know what the board goals are or the superintendent goals, and then they go to fill out the evaluation, and they don't know what the goals were.
So you could do, you could do four of them.
What should we do in?
You could do November, because that's when you would most likely start to see the action plans for things. Then you would start, then you would look at January, you could do it at your reorg meeting. So even your newest members. That's a great idea, Tom. Thank you. Even your newest members get to see what the progress has been. And then you do it in March, which gets you on point and on target for the superintendent's evaluation. And then you do it in June, your last meeting in June, so that people know how you wrapped up the year.
Four times instead of three.
Yeah. And we recommend three or four times a year. Some districts do it more often than that, but that's something that has to be worked out and agreed upon between the board and the administration, because, you know, it is, it is putting information together that you'll want to know and that you'll want to have presented to you. Like I said, it doesn't have to be a PowerPoint. It can, you know, be talking points about what we've accomplished thus far, what's next coming up. But it doesn't have to be a, you know, catwalk presentation by any means. Okay? Policy, also an area that could be an opportunity for growth for you guys. Reviewing an updated policy manual required as per CUSAC was a strength. And the other areas in there, you can really, you know, hopefully maybe with a policy board goal, you know, to review and maintain your policies, review and revise and maintain the policies, so that they're up to date, that would be something that you might want to consider for a board goal.
What does "mum" mean as a comment?
I think that's a type.
I think it's not.
None.
I'm kidding.
What do you consider a subsidy for a policy? Is there a certain timeframe or?
So usually there's, there's a couple of years that are involved, and what you can do is, and I think you guys just showed us last night, didn't I think?
Yes.
This is not, this is not a tactic to try and get you to use New Jersey school boards. It is not. Okay? Part of your dues, though, and what you are entitled to with your dues, is a policy wellness check. So you can do that policy wellness check. We usually encourage a board to do it about six months, six, eight months before you know you're going to be CUSAC. And then you'll get, our policy folks will go in and look at all of your policies, they're all online, so we generally just need the link to that, go through, and look at anything that might be out of date for your CUSAC review.
Out of date, like what does that mean?
And recommend.
So like, what if we have a policy from 2010, and we still use the same policy? Do we need to say that we reviewed it in 2020?
It would be a good idea to review and revise.
Of course, you're not talking about all policies.
No, no.
Because that's what the policy alerts are for from last night.
Right, right. And so, but the wellness check is, as I said, it's, it's in your due structure, so it doesn't cost you anything, and you can do that, you know, every other year or so. Mostly we recommend it regular for, you know, the year that you're being CUSAC, if you know six to eight months ahead of time, because they do tend to get backlog a little bit. But that way, you'll get, usually it's anywhere from a five to 10-page memo, and it will let you know what policies need to be revised for your CUSAC review, if you have any policies that have language in it that needs to be removed because it's out of date and there's a new requirement, things like that. So it's very, very helpful to boards. It's not taking the place of super assessment. It's just an extra kind of a wellness check, kind of like, you know, you go to the doctor for a physical.
When do we do CUSAC?
So we're due for CUSAC in the '23, '24 school year. Okay.
So this is different, because it's saying each board member, about you, the board member, we scored high, 3.4, but then we're saying as a whole, the board doesn't. That's contradictory to me.
So you'll notice, you'll notice that throughout, pretty much. Okay? That as individual board members, you all feel stronger than when you come and sit as a board.
Right.
I would like to see that flipped next year.
Right.
Okay? And there are some things that I think that you can do with some team building, you know, and some different kinds of workshops that we can do together that can help with that. Okay? Because you want to be able to feel strong as an individual board member, but you also want to feel, and most of the time in the first five areas, from policy to board operations, you usually feel, that's usually where a board feels a little bit stronger as a group than they do as individuals. Those are your task areas. The last four areas, which is board performance to da-da-da-da-da, to staff and board and community, those are your relationship areas, and that's where individuals usually feel that they do a little bit better than the board does itself.
Right.
But in this case, I think that there's some, some real good areas and opportunities for growth in that for you. Okay? So student achievement, this was also an area that offers you, provides you with some opportunities for growth, relative strengths for requiring a written curriculum, with specific evaluation components, and authoritative statutes, requiring systematic evaluation of and feedback of the instructional program, and monitoring the effectiveness of your instructional programs by measuring student achievement against state and local standards.
So Mary Ann, since this is so low, that you're going to probably recommend that this would be a board goal.
So one of the things that you'll want to do is when you have, you're going to have student achievement reports. Now, we don't have the data from this year yet, right?
Not yet. But typically we do it in October, and if we get it too later, it'll be November.
Okay. So you want to make particular care, take particular care, when you have those recordings out on your student assessments, that you really take a look at that, and that you get your, that you ask questions about that. Is there anything that we should be doing or that we could be doing to improve student achievement in these particular areas? Is there anything that really kind of sparks, you know, a flair for a certain curriculum that maybe we should be looking to look at? Those kinds of things. And those are things that your superintendent and your, if your assistant superintendent, you know, provides you with all of that information. But those are some of the things that you want to be looking at. It's hard right now, because the data that you get this year, you're not going to have anything to compare it to really statewide testing anyway.
Right.
For the past two years. So that's going to, that's the difficulty right now with state assessments. So hopefully you've had some, some district benchmarks and measurements that you've been able to use to get some of that information, to be able to look at how we did last year and how we did this year. Okay?
Quick question. On this evaluation here, number one, planning, it says three, two, and one on the first page. Is that people that voted for that?
Yes.
Why is it there seven, or is only, that's only six?
Because only six people completed it. And then generally, the other thing that can happen with the numbers, so those are, that's the number of people that checked off that box or that review button. Okay? So then if we go to finance, this was an area that had some strengths in it and some opportunities for growth. Strengths were exercising financial oversight in all aspects of district operations, providing policy guidelines and parameters related to our goals and budget development evaluation. And then an area that you could use as an opportunity for growth is requesting that all request, requiring that all requests for unbudgeted items have be accompanied by specific indication of need and funding sources. Okay? That's something that you can request of the administration anytime we have something that we're moving from, you know, column A to column B, or from line item A to line item B. How come we, how come we either didn't have enough money in that? Remember, your budget is a fluid document. It's what, it's a planning document, just like your household budget is. Sometimes things come in higher, sometimes things come in less than what you budgeted for. So having those, those changes and those transfers are not a big deal. You just want to be able to know, did we, where, how come we needed more money in this, and where are we taking the money from, and how come we can take the money from that? It's almost always going to be the numbers came in higher than we budgeted for, and in the particular item that we're taking the money from. To take care of that is because those items came in lower than what we budgeted for.
Mary Ann, so what is your suggestion? Each month, the business administrator opens up the bills to any board member. You don't have to be on the finance committee or any committee. Do other school districts, I know we have one or two people that go in every month and look through the bills. Do you agree with that? Do you think more board members should get involved and go look at the bills, or do you think we shouldn't, as board members, do that?
I think it's really up to you and how you operate. Do you have a finance committee?
We do.
Okay. So typically, when there's a finance committee, the finance committee will look at the bills every month.
We don't do it through finance. It's, as long as I've been on the board, we didn't do bills through finance.
Okay. Where do they go, what committee do they go? It goes through the whole board?
None.
Do you work as a board of the whole?
No. No, we have committees, but the bills, the monthly bills don't go through a committee. You're offered, each board member's offered to go in the day before the, the meeting, if they want to look at it. But in the past, did it go through?
No.
No, so we've never, it's, the bills have never gone through a committee.
And it's just for whoever wants to. Yeah, I mean, we all get the electronic in our attachments of what it is, but if you want to see the actual receipts. I mean, I go, and I learn a lot each month, you know, where the money's going. It's helpful for me just to see. And that's good, because Kim is, doesn't work during the day, but those that work during the day, like I never was able to go in unless I go in at night, and that's not fair to Sharon or whoever. So I like the idea of the finance committee going through the bills.
Right. Because I know I go in too, but I don't work also. But it's very informative.
But does that mean, though, that if it goes through the finance committee, then the other board members are?
No, I think anyone should be allowed to look at it.
Because even the public has a right to see it. Right. Okay. But that way.
Right. So I guess that is a good idea, doing it through finance, so just, so somebody's looking at them. We do trust the administration, but I think it's good also to review, and you do learn so much by looking at the bills.
But where you get all the bills, don't we?
We get, that's different than looking at the bills and seeing what you need to.
I like to look at the bills to see like what we ordered.
We see a lot of times when you're going through the bills, you're looking to make sure that it's not through the approved, the correct approval process.
Yes.
Correct approval process, not a process. As we were. An approval process.
Right.
It's only Monday.
Right.
Downhill from here.
So Sal, anybody's allowed to do that. That's not finance. Okay?
Have you looked through the bills yet?
Couple times.
Yeah. You learn a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So then board operations, this was, is also an area where there are some, some opportunities for growth and also some strengths. Holding your meetings in compliance with all applicable statutes, policies, and bylaws was an area of strength, providing time, funding, and opportunity for orienting and updating our board members. Those are things like going to workshop, and you know what workshop is in person this year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
They thought it was in person.
So we're hoping that everybody's going to be able to get down there. And then also, your board method of governance has clearly defined bylaws. That was also an area of strength. Okay? Some of the other things that are listed there are really opportunities for growth. And I think that those are some of the things that, you know, we can really work on, and you can work on together. I mean, I don't have a magic wand, unfortunately. None of us do at New Jersey school boards, but these are all things that sometimes pointing out these areas makes it more, you become more aware of it, and then you know, okay, you know what, these are things we need to work on. And, and that responsibility really rests with every single board member, because if you're coming to the table feeling like, oh, you know, we as a board, we're just, these people are dragging me down, I'm doing really great, but everybody else is dragging me down, that's not contributing to the overall effectiveness of the board. And just as you have great expectations and high expectations for your students and your staff, I have those high expectations for you. Keeping in mind, this has been happening during COVID. Okay? It's been really difficult for a lot of boards to really have that kind of feeling of cohesion that they had had or may have had before the pandemic, because a lot of your board meetings have been, you know, with a piece of glass in front of you.
Well, I haven't had board dinners at these board conventions.
Right, there's a lot that's been missing. And we've noticed that at county meetings too. We've had an increase at county meetings of people attending, and it was great to see you guys back in May, June. Yeah, right. When we met, but, you know, and having, having that virtual option for our county meetings will continue for this year anyway, for 2022, 2023. They will all be virtual in January and February for weather purposes. I think that's something that may continue, because we usually have difficulty with, with bad weather in January and February meetings, and then we pay for a venue, we can't go, and all of that. So we're really trying to come to those county meetings, because you do get to meet and talk to other people and hear about what's going on in their districts and the things that they are doing. And you can get a lot of good ideas from them, and sometimes it's also just nice to be able to go. One of the things that I always liked going for was, I always, I sometimes felt, not always, but I sometimes felt over that nine years, probably more than not, that, that we were kind of not working well together. And then I'd go to a county meeting or go to workshop and I'd hear what other people were talking about, and I think, wow, we're not that bad after the fall. So sometimes it's a positive, is to hear about somebody else who's struggling. Okay? The board operations, like I said, I do have high expectations for you guys.
So Mary Ann, quick question for you one. As we're reading through this, I'm hearing you say that, you know, as we're reading the, the results that are coming in low, those are opportunities to set as board goals.
Those are opportunities for growth. So a goal, an overarching goal for, for the board goal could be to, you know, to have, to have four training sessions over the course of the year, '22, '23, on topics to be determined. And those could be, you know, team building, it could be conflict resolution, it could be a lot of different board role and policy, could be a lot of different things, board role and personnel, all those different kinds of things. And you have on the left-hand side of your packet, the very last page, are all the programs that we have. And if you have something that you want me to address in particular, I can always develop a program for you. And also keep in mind that any program that, all of those programs on the back, those are all, they're kind of general programs, and then what I do is I always make it more specific to the particular board that I'm going into. So no packet is ever really the same from one board to another.
Can we get a copy of what Ocean County School Boards is going to present for the year?
That will be coming out. I don't think they finalized everything yet. I do know that the first meeting has changed from, I think it changed from October 17th to the 3rd, or from 3rd to the 17th. It's the 17th now, their first meeting. So Ocean County's first meeting will be on October 17th, but I don't know where it's going to be yet. And I don't think we have all those plans worked out. Once we do, then they're usually sent out a notice. Okay?
Maybe we could use some of those meetings.
Yes.
As growth as well.
Right. And remember, when you go out to meetings that are hosted by or facilitated by New Jersey School Boards, you get individual credit for those things. When you, when I come in or when somebody else comes in from New Jersey School Boards, you get board credit for those. Okay? So Board Performance. This was an area that had, you know, maybe every year for to attend a board meetings, coming prepared, was an area of strength for you guys. Some of the other areas there are really areas that, you know, that I think can easily be improved upon now that you know that those are areas that the ratings were a little bit lower. Okay? And like I said, it's up to every single individual board member to try and work on those things. Because that's the way it works. Each person makes a big impact, there's a big difference. Board Superintendent Relationships. There are a couple of areas in here that were strengths. Keeping the superintendent informed about community and school issues and aspirations, conducting a comprehensive annual evaluation of the superintendent in accordance with statute of COVID-19. And then working with the superintendent to develop performance objective evaluations that are consistent with district goals and policy. Those were areas of strength. Board Staff Relationships. This was so close, so close. Area of strength there, providing for public recognition of staff and achievements. Okay? And I would encourage you to go through the comments, okay, at some point. You'll need to go through those now, and I generally don't go over those in public anyway. Boarding Community, this was an area of strength. Acting as Representatives for Every Child in the School District. That's always extremely positive. Building partnerships with community, business, and governmental leaders. And then, I'm sorry, those are areas for improvement. Those are areas for improvement. Acting as Representatives. And truly, I don't know if people were hitting the wrong buttons there.
On which, where, Mary?
Acting as Representatives for Every Child in our school district. Because it's almost impossible for me to believe that any board member throughout the state, no matter why they come to the Board, no matter how they're driven to come to the Board, once they get here, does not try to do what's in the best interest of every student in the district. So I think there might have been some.
Wrong buttons.
Some wrong buttons clicked there. Okay? And then here, Identifying Challenges Facing the District. Really, this was all about budget and state aid. And I know that you've really been severely impacted by S2, trying to maintain student achievement and improve student achievement in the midst of your budget crisis and your state is really, your state aid crisis, it's not your budget crisis. It's the state aid is going to be, you know, continue to be difficult for you guys over the next coming years. And then in your role as a Board, what specific areas of Board Governance require additional focus and training? Board Roles and Responsibilities was talked about. Ethics was a big one. And then Team Building was another big one. So then I wanted to bring your attention to the charts. And the charts really are just graphic representation, but it's, I think it's good to see. So the gray, so from planning over to Board Operations, those first five areas, those are your task areas. And the value that you gave to those is the gray. And then the board rating that you gave is in the blue. And some of these are pretty close together and some of them are a little bit further apart. So the goal, I, in my mind anyway, would be to try and get those columns closer together. Okay? So to try and build up those board scores in terms of without that you had ranked each of those areas on. And then the second chart is Board to Individual. And this is an area where as individuals, you raise yourselves higher than as the Board, as an entity. Okay? And I think that, you know, I'm hoping that with COVID kind of being more treated like a flu now at this point instead of endemic, that maybe your meetings will become, you know, more together, more in-person than they have been. And then you'll be able to get back on track to working together as a team. And then the third chart is your ratings for yourselves as a Board last year as opposed to this year. And in terms of areas of improvement, Board Staff Relationships and Boarding Community Relationships, those were either equal to or greater than last year's. Okay? The others had a slight difference in cases. Okay? Questions? Okay. Next. So I just went on the, behind that were the, your district board goals and superintendent goals from last year. And you have the PowerPoint on the right.
Well, you handed that out. I, for the board members, just did an outline of today for you guys to take notes. Because what I, and I did the same thing you did. I made a copy of last year's notes. And then I started to draft some new goals. But I want input from everybody, so I'm just going to pass this out.
Okay. And what I always do is I always ask the superintendent to come to a goal-setting meeting with some proposed goals or some draft goals. Your superintendent is your educational leader and they are the ones to know best what things need to really be focused on. But it is supposed to be a collaborative development of the district goals. So I always ask them to come prepared to talk about some proposed goals or some draft goals. And then for they were to have a conversation about those so that we can see and they can be developed collaboratively. Okay? So you do have the PowerPoint on the right-hand side. And I'm just going to go through the beginnings of this quickly. We're calling it forging ahead together in hope because.
Boy, because we need it.
We need that hope, right? We absolutely need that hope. So that was why this came about. So some of the things that we want to think about are what did we learn from last year? What can we, what can we begin evaluating? How can we evaluate what we've accomplished? What's our analysis of what needs to be continued? And then preparing for September 2022, whatever that was, is going to look like. So from the past four years, when you think about the pandemic over the past couple of years, we learned a lot about resiliency. We learned a lot about flexibility and pivoting quickly. Staff, superintendents, boards of education, parents and students all had to do that incredibly quickly. And when you think about it, March 13th, it happened to be a Friday the 13th, I'll never forget that, was the day that we found out that pretty much everything was shutting down. And I remember what we needed to go through to get our stuff available at home, to be able to work from home, knowing just briefly and vaguely what you all had to do to get that stuff done is just mind-blowing to me. The tenacity and the endurance of your staff, of your superintendent, of your business administrator, of yourselves, of your students, of your parents. We learned a lot about equity. Learned a lot about what we were missing with equity. And a lot of that has been accomplished because of the pandemic in terms of, you know, internet and, you know, technology and things like that, because we had to respond to that. The professionalism and the commitment of your staff and your administration. The parental commitment to the education of the kids. My daughter is a teacher. She's a special ed teacher in kindergarten in another district in Middlesex County. And I remember her saying to me, I'm looking at Facebook. She called me one night, she said, looking at Facebook. And all these people who are saying they're homeschooling their kids, they're not homeschooling their kids. They are giving their kids the information that we provide to them and they're supporting that. But homeschooling and being taught from home remotely are two very different things. But, you know, for a lot of people, this was a big, big challenge. You know, there are a lot of parents out there who didn't really feel qualified to help their kids. So that was a big turnaround for them. We learned about the possibilities and limitations of the technology and of the internet. And really the critical role that relationships really play in a Board, in education, in providing that education to students and then about opportunity gaps. Whereas one of my districts likes to call it the interrupted learning process. And then we know that effective school boards have clear goals for student achievement, classroom instruction, that's based on high expectations, shared beliefs and values of what's possible for all students. And then we know that effective school boards really embrace and monitor both the quantitative and quantitative data. They use that data for continuous improvement efforts. They identify specific student learning needs through the data and they also discuss that later regularly. They ensure that the district goals remain the top priority. So you're going to have four times over the course of the next year, if I read the room right correctly, that you're going to have those progress reports. That's going to let your community members, your staff, and your students know that you're still focused on these. That you can understand and explain some of the educational initiatives and the improvement initiatives that are going on in the district. And it's, that it's a system-wide focus that you have on student achievement and on outcomes. High achieving districts accept no excuses. They believe that poverty rates, lack of parent involvement, and other factors are challenges in the open. And we always feel that way, folks. And we expect to see improvements in student achievement. Okay? So why do you set goals? You want to make sure that you have equitable policy development. You want to make sure that you're moving closer to the achievement of all of your students, that they get to where they need to be. That you're planning for implementation of programs and professional development for staff and for you. That you're providing for that periodic evaluation. Part of it is to provide also effective communication and collaborative communication out to your public. We are working together to focus on these things and to move them forward. And then the accountability piece for the superintendent's evaluation. And should you ever decide that you don't want to use our evaluation tool, there are other evaluation tools out there, but what you need to be really careful about is that you include the district goals as part of the evaluation. Because state statute says that you have to include progress towards district goals. And not every state has that. So just be careful if you're, you can look around, but just make sure that you include a piece about accountability for the district goals. There's my Yogi Bear. You don't know where you're going, you might end up someplace else. What's that mean? So this is where we are right now. We're at the red arrow with the goal setting. So we're going to develop district and board goals. And then action plans will be developed by the superintendent and the administrative team. Because the district goals are the what. They are what you want to see happen, which your superintendent has identified they need to see happen over the upcoming year. Action plans are the how. That's how she's going to get you there from point A to point B. Your role, so the district goals will belong to everybody after they're adopted and developed. Their, the achievement of the district goals is the responsibility of the superintendent for the administrative team and the teachers. But your role in owning the district goals after this is to make sure that you're providing the support and the resources that are needed to be able, for her to achieve those goals. Okay? Then you'll have reporting out on those. That's the monitoring piece. In November, January, and in March. I like to always give one up. Suggest to always do one at the end of the year so you know where you wrapped up. Because technically, the superintendent has from July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2023 to achieve those goals. Okay? Then you start your evaluation process all over again and we're back to where we are now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
For action plans, is that something that's posted? Did we do an action plan, I recall, for last year or did we just do goals?
We did goals.
Okay.
So the action plans are important because they let you know what the activities are.
So you'll have for the quarter.
Yeah. So you'll, well, they can be, they can be for the whole year. So you could have in the action plan that there are four areas, four activities that need to happen under this particular objective. Because you will probably have objectives underneath the goal here.
And that's posted online?
Do you want, it's in here, do you want to see it?
Yeah.
That can be posted.
Thank you.
That's the.
This is a strategic plan.
Okay. But then our action.
Plans in there.
Okay.
So that's what the action plans will look like.
Okay.
Okay. So they're always going to have the activities that are going to be taken, you know, implemented. Then they'll have who's responsible for them. It could be the Board, it could be the administration, it could be the teaching staff, it could be principals, whatever. It could be community members. And then you want to have what the resources are that you need. That's usually time, people, or money. Then you want to have what the timeframe is. And you have a sample of, a blank one in your packet, actually. You have one for district and you have one for board goals on the left side.
So for the action plan, like this is a five-year plan.
Actually, I think I know what Kim's asking.
Yeah. So like this year, we need to make it.
You're talking about an action plan, though, for the goals that we're going to develop.
Yes.
Right.
Correct. And then for just not five years, just a one year.
No, that's going to be for one year.
Yes.
Right. And you sent me the template, but I started my own, which I showed in committee. I can throw it up there after you're done presenting, just show you so that we're all in agreement, that it makes sense to everybody. And then I will set the mile markers of November, January, March, and June.
And we're going to have input on that, correct?
Well, I'll present it too.
Those, so that's the how.
Right. So can we have input before it's presented? Because then I feel like it's already done and then our goals might not be the same.
That's the superintendent's responsibility.
What do you mean? So her goals.
Responsibility to develop the how she's going to get you there.
But don't we make the goals first before she tells us how?
Yes.
Okay. So what do you have prepared?
We just don't help with her action how.
No, that again, but like, so you didn't, we didn't make the goals, obviously.
Well, I started them. We're going to talk about them today. I have the templates started. So like, for example, there are some things that I've made action plans for that are not a goal. For example, the dress code committee, the bullying committee. Those are not goals. I mean, it could be by the time we're done, but I've already started those, so I already have action plans going on those. And that's what I'm going to show you.
Okay.
And then you'll have timelines. What's the deadline for this to be accomplished? And then indicators of success. How will we know that that happens?
Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me. So Kim, are you saying that if the superintendent comes up with five goals and you're like, I don't like your goals?
Correct.
Like, I want, we, or I.
The Board.
Should be we, not I. So we don't like your goals, we want these goals.
So let's just say the Board agrees that we want our scores to be raised by like 10% in one year. Let's just say math and English or whatever. So I feel like the goals should be made together and then the action plans, not just you presenting to us.
No, that's the way it's going to happen.
Okay.
Today, so.
So today we come up with the goals.
Today, we're going to develop the goals collaboratively for you guys, collaboratively develop them. But I have asked the superintendent, which I always do.
Right.
To bring in proposed goals that she feels are important for the next year. There's only ever going to be three to five goals, okay? Because when, after I left the Board to come to New Jersey School Boards in 2008, our superintendent called me in, so that was in like April. And in June, she called me and she said, so we did our goals last night. And I said, oh, did you have the field service rep assigned to come in and do those? And she said, no, our president wanted to do them. He wanted to facilitate it himself. And I said, how did that work out for you? She said, I now have 35 goals.
Well, that's a lot.
So you can't have 35 goals because, well, you can. But if you have 35 goals, number one, you can't operate the district on a day-to-day basis and you can't really focus on anything.
Right.
So you want there to be three to five areas that are of laser focus for you for the upcoming year. But I do always ask the superintendent to come with ideas about those things and areas and then there'll be a discussion about them. So then she develops the action plan.
It sounds like the areas of focus need to be identified before the goals are identified.
We're going to, we're going to get through that.
So let's just say there's goals from, we have our five goals, but then there's goals from last year that were not met. So then.
Back at the bottom. We're going to talk about that.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Good? Okay. So district goals, everyone owns those, as I said before. They're collaboratively set between the superintendent and the Board. They usually have to do with program and instruction, staffing, human resources, facilities and finance, communications, things of that nature, professional development. And then board goals are the tasks that are owned by the Board. They usually have to do with process and procedure. They can have to do with policy, they can have to do with getting, becoming. I think you, you guys were a certified Board at one point, were you not?
In terms of.
No.
Full Board.
Not as a full Board.
Okay. Individual Board members.
Individual Board members, okay.
How do you become a certified?
So certified Board, so Board Credits for the Board. So when I come in to meet with you or somebody from the association meets with you, you get one Academy Credit per hour. So for today, you'll have two credits just for this. And then it's 16 credits over four years. So it's basically getting four credits a year.
So having a board retreat counts.
Having a board retreat counts, yeah. So this is going to count towards that.
So do we have, like, do we have credit now on the books?
I have to look and see what you have.
Okay.
A lot of Boards don't have a lot of credit over the pandemic because.
We have Regina for how many years? She bumped us up.
No, it has to be the whole Board.
Yeah. The whole Board has to be together. We had a board retreat. Yeah.
Like Donna has the same certification now.
Was it with?
Doesn't help us.
Oh, okay.
Well, it does.
Yeah. So I just have to go back and I have to take a look. Any credits that you have, they fall off after four years. So right now, credits from 2018 will fall off at the end of this year. And then you'll still have credits from 2019, 2020, '21, and '22.
So you have to list.
What is the advantage of being a certified Board?
Usually, Boards that are certified are more effective. They work together really well because they've had all of that training together. So, you know, when you come out for training as an individual, you get individual credits. And that certainly can benefit the Board in a lot of different ways. But when you get the training together, it's usually even more beneficial.
So it's, yeah, okay, so it doesn't.
You don't get, you don't get more money.
Yeah, it doesn't affect us financially.
No. Sadly, no. I wish I could tell you.
Right. Right, and then theoretically it makes us work better.
Yes.
In theory.
Um, in my experience, I can say yes, that that's true, it's, it's a qualitative thing, not a quantitative thing, but, you know, yeah, absolutely.
And the only negative is there are different members on the board.
When three members, when, when the board changes by three, well, in your case, it would probably still be three, then the credits start over.
I got you.
Okay, so I have to look at that too.
Okay.
Have you had, how many new board members did you have this past year?
One.
Just one? How about last year?
One.
Oh, okay, then you should be fine for the past couple of years. So I'll take a look at that and I'll, in like the memo that I sent you, I'll let you know, okay?
There'll be a memo to summarize today?
Yeah. Okay, so this is how the stakeholder roles in the educational goals come together, the community has given you their values and aspirations in the strategic planning process, and you have that already, then the board looks at the areas of focus of intent, usually with the superintendent's input, as I said, the resources that they're going to need to supply for those things, and the accountability and appraisal of the superintendent and the evaluation, and then that drops down to the superintendent and the teams, you know, your administrative teams, annual goals, and then down to the educator's goals. So it really, the, the smart part of the goals, the specific, the measurable, the achievable, the relevant of the time band, usually are going to be seen in the action plans, not necessarily in the goal statement, okay? So some sample goal areas are student learning, student success, educational excellence, equity for all students, health and wellness, students and staff, facilities finance, oftentimes facilities and finances grouped together, safety and security, communication, or community engagement or involvement. So these are some of the questions that you want to be thinking about, what should our focus be for the upcoming year that would most dramatically improve student achievement and address those opportunity gaps? What kind of educational programs do we have that are meeting the learning needs and supporting the social emotional students, needs of our students? How do we address emerging mental health issues of students' end staff? What does our, our data identify, and as I said, you know, if that data isn't here yet, what inputs suggest a needed improvement in overall student success and how our financial resources and budget align and support student achievement plans and priorities? And then what should our time, talent, and resources be used best to, how can they best be used to ensure that our students are critical thinkers, collaborative problem solvers, digitally literate, critically responsible, culturally responsive, with a love of learning and moral ethical and ethic and compassion? So this is your mission statement, the mission of Lacy Township School District is to inspire excellence in each student's educational experience and to instill strong values of pride and tradition. These were your, these were your goals from last year, so you had learner success, now I will tell you that pretty much student success, learner success, improved student achievement, something of that nature as a goal area is always going to be a district goal because you're a school. So what do we want to do? We want to improve student achievement and student success for all of our kids.
And this is what you've given us in paperwork.
And that's what I've given you, so what I hope to do is for us to be able to first hope through these quickly and see if there's anything that needs to be carried over into the next year, and then do we want that to be a district goal or a board goal?
Okay, so we, how many board goals did we have?
Three and five.
And how many district goals?
Three and five.
Seven.
Yep. So goal number one was primary success by September 2022, successfully implementing standard grade through four card, grades K through two.
So we're, it's done.
Okay.
Implementation year is this year, so I thought it was a good goal to carry over to measure from September to the end of the year, because not only did we do K2, we expanded to K4, but I want to hear thoughts.
We're starting that in September?
Well, let me rephrase, the standard-based report card template is done, we have to do it in service for our teachers, then we have to do it in service for our parents, and hope to have it done at the end of the first quarter.
So if we don't make that a goal, but it's going to happen, can we not make that a goal, so we don't waste our goal?
Sure.
Like, it's already going to happen.
You don't, everything doesn't, everything doesn't have to be a goal in order to be achieved. Okay, your superintendent is still going to run the district on a day-to-day basis, without saying, the superintendent will run the district on a day-to-day basis, so those are things that, you know, if you know that they're already in progress, they don't necessarily need to be a goal. You may, though, with this, depending on what the student achievement goal or the student success or the learner success goal looks like, it may be part of the action, you can drop that in as part of the action plan so that they can see that that's still going on.
I have a question. Dr. Pereira, I'm confused, so the first marking period's going to be the old report card, and then the second marking period's going to be the new standards-based one?
No, we'd hope to be ready by the, by the first marking period.
End of the first period.
End of the first marking period, put it out.
Perfect, okay, okay.
So I would say pass on.
Me too, I'm not, right, I don't want to waste this as a goal.
Right.
If we're doing it.
Good.
Okay, then develop the quarterly listen and learn form to survey students in grades five through 12 on all aspects of student life in Lacy Township School District, the data gathered will be used to drive future student programming.
So Marion, could we make that a board goal anyway?
Which one?
You make any one.
Number two, how could we make that a board goal to bring in, instead of the, to have it a superintendent one, could that one become, how could that become a board goal?
It's really a district goal.
It would be?
But she's going to do it anyway, you're going to continue that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so there's no issue. So don't have it as a goal then? I mean, if you're going to do it, I don't, should, can we table that one maybe?
Is it number two or four?
Well, we run the risk of having 10 goals.
No, we won't have 10.
No, you can't, because if that's the problem, it doesn't mean.
That's what I'm saying, if we keep tabling things, we run the risk of having 35 goals, like.
We're not going to have that at the end.
Even though we table it and we say, she's already doing that, and we create another list of five new goals, now we have 10 new goals.
No.
We have five existing and five new ones.
It'll just be part of the everyday.
I know what you mean, and I agree with you, I see what you're saying, because basically what you're doing is you're saying, keep working, this is a goal, hope we're still going to add more.
Yeah, and we're increasing the workload.
Yeah, but goal number one's going to be eliminated because it'd be in the company.
It's already done.
Well, then we'll run two.
But number two.
I'm just saying, though.
Number two would be ongoing, correct? If I'm mistaken.
Two's the same as four, I think.
Yeah, it's ongoing.
I think two and four are the same.
So number two is an ongoing one, right, Skip?
Right, but I guess it should be ongoing. What Sal and Ed are trying to say is that, let's say we get to June and I had my goals, I have eight listen and learn, and they went really well, that's something that, it was a good goal, because I got it done, just to have it on, to say that I'm going to do it and actually do it are two different things.
Exactly.
The question I had is, and Sal, you know, me to pop him by his question, so we have five goals for 21 and 22, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And if each goal is achieved, do we eliminate that goal and then add another one to it to keep it a five, once that goal's completed, we've reached that milestone, now we want this done?
So what I want to do is go through these goals from last year to see what was achieved and what needs to be continued, and if it needs to be continued, do you want it to stay as a goal? Okay? Then we're going to listen to what Dr. Pereira has to, to give in terms of proposed goals, and then we'll look to combine and to merge so that there aren't more than five goals.
Or you can ask our input before we combine? Like of what our things are? So then Dr. Pereira will do hers first and then we'll just say what we're looking for, and then hopefully it comes together with five.
I think you're probably, most often you're on the same page.
Okay.
So to me, number two and four are pretty much the same.
See, and those are things that the board wouldn't be doing, so, you know, if you're surveying students, the board's not surveying the students, the district is surveying the students, so that's why that's a district responsibility, not a board responsibility.
Right, so, but do you understand, do you agree that two and four are pretty much the same thing?
No, one's public and one's.
But it's all listen and learn, it's all at the same time, Nick.
Can a board member be present at that for observation?
Always. It would be better.
We did go to them, we went to yours this year, yeah.
Now, do you want to make, well, let's go through them and then we'll come back.
Well, two and four is one, like Skip said, one's public, one's private, so the one is for students.
Is that what you want to do?
And the other's for the public.
Like, we could combine that.
Oh, yeah, you could.
Let's go through all of them and then we'll come back, okay?
Okay, so student achievement, all under K2, how'd that work out?
So, the problem with that is that the results come in late, right, so that's tough, but I can say that we did meet that goal, so, you know, Kim provided an example before and said that there'll be a 10% in overall achievement, that's too broad, it has to be more specific, so you'll see the, the achievement goal, because we've identified through NWA local assessment and through our stark strong assessments last fall, that grades five through eight math are right now our weakest, five through eight math, so that's why the new goal.
That would be a good goal.
That's a good goal, right, so I, I wrote that goal, and it's really small on the handout that I gave you, but it's the second page, third slide, by June 2023, there will be an increase in the number of students in grades five through eight meeting their projected growth on the spring math NWA as compared to the fall math NWEA, so we're comparing fall to spring, so they have to show student growth.
So can we attach a percentage or number to that?
Well, it's hard to do that on student growth because each student's growth is different, if they show growth, that means that they're, they're on grade level, and that's what we've identified, that students right now, there are not, the percentage of students on grade level needs to be higher.
So is that the test that we got back where we were not proficient enough in math and English? Okay, so why can't we just say a 5% improvement overall? So we have a goal, a number that's measurable, I think part of.
How would you measure that?
Well.
Because you have all different students.
But in the end, we get that number, right? We get like that.
Yeah, but I'm talking student growth and you're talking the standardized assessment.
Yeah, I'm not talking about standardized assessment.
So on NWEA, there, when we do the October presentation, we always talk about RIT, and RIT is like a ruler, right, and I'm trying to explain it in language terms, so like, if I'm a student in third grade, and I'm just going to totally make this up, my RIT should be 200, but the NWEA showing that my RIT is 175, that means I'm 25 points short of where NWA's saying you should be, so what we're, what I'm saying in this goal is that the, that there's an increase, like, I would, I would present to you that, you know, 50% of our students are showing growth in the NWEA, we want to get that percentage up, if we go up, you know, 10%, that's growth.
So to, for Kim's point and your point, can it say by June 2023, there will be an increase of at least 10% in the number of students in grade, that's what you're looking for?
Just something measurable.
She's not looking, she's not just throwing a number up on, on board, she did that for compensation checks, what she wants is a real number based on the data, that we can identify a real growth number that we can hit, if that number's 10%, 8%, 9 and 1/2%, 3/4%, so be it.
I may have to reword that and change it from student growth to something else.
Yeah, I mean.
Just something that's measurable.
Yeah, maybe there's an algorithm behind it, I don't know, but there's, there's something when it comes to data that you're going to, you can measure.
Yeah, let me take a look.
You're still going to keep in mind with that five grade track away, you have a brand-new principal, but it's never been a principal before in a school, she's never worked out before, and 50% of these kids in Army Mill Pond School, grades five through eight, you've got to keep that in mind.
Yeah, we've had, well, we've had a lot of change, too, you know, we have a new principal in the middle school, too.
Yeah, but we have somebody that's never been a principal before.
True.
She's been a supervisor, construction dealing, curriculum.
Right, I'm just saying, keep that, I mean, for first year at that school, first year in that position as a principal, there's a lot of, you need to keep that in mind.
Working our favor too, right, new person, a lot, a lot more energy, a lot more excitement behind the job, could work in our benefit.
So let me rework this, okay? All right, so then, so far, we're not going to do goal number one, we're going to, well, we'll come back to goal number two, let's finish, because I'm trying to stay on track.
So goal number three is going to be reworked?
Yep.
And you're going to send me that information, because I'm, okay. The community outreach and engagement goal, that's probably part of your strategic plan, I'm sure that that fell from the strategic plan, so does that need to continue?
Well, I think what Donna was saying is that two and four sound a little bit alike, so I reworked in your, that's the second slide, I reworded the goal, because I too thought it was a little repetitive, so it now reads, leverage community resources and utilize effective communication to enhance positive district culture and support student success in two ways, engage in regular and open to way communication with families and the community about the school students' needs, challenges, accomplishments using Remind Hub, which is new to us, district websites, we're working on a little bit of an overhaul, and social media channels, what I should include there is listen and learn forms, because now I've encompassed everything.
Right.
And then the second is, build and sustain productive partnerships with public and private sectors to promote school improvement, student learning, and service learning, which is something that we talked about, whether that count as a graduation requirement or just as service learning.
Which, we forgot to do that in policy, Vanessa, we talked about it, to put it on the agenda, and then I, for some reason.
And I had it too, and we didn't move it so much.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Vanessa, I don't understand what you're saying, can you just explain the build and sustain productive partnerships with public and private sectors, can you give an example?
So like, if we're going to say that, and again, even if we don't, and I don't recommend we start out as a graduation requirement, but service learning, in order to do that, we have to establish a relationship, I'm just going to again make this up, with say Home Depot, that our students are going to get service learning points by going to Home Depot and helping Stock Sheldon, or going to the food bank, or, I don't know, helping.
Okay, that part I get, productive partnerships with public and private sectors to promote improvements, but student learning, what do you mean with student learning?
Well, because that's going to be a learning experience for them, so like, let's say you have that student who is not interested in a four-year college, but goes and does service learning at an auto body shop, so all of a sudden they discover that, hey, I want to open up my own auto body, you know what I'm saying, so that's an opportunity for learning, not just in the classroom, so that's kind of what I mean.
Sort of an internship.
Or like an internship, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's what I mean.
Okay, so that, so that goal, goal number two on this, that's agreeable to everybody?
Except I have to add the listen and learn to that, and now we've combined two and four.
Right.
Are you guys good with that?
I am.
No.
No?
I only combined two and four, it's two different aspects of people, two is the public, four is the rotary, the this, the that, and there will be different aspects of the rotary that contribute to the district, or that the, you know, preschools can contribute to the district, there's two different aspects from number two and number one, the listen and learn form survey for students five through 12, developing Lacy Township District, the data gathered used to drive student programming, and then when you look at four, it's more going out to businesses, commercial end, it's the difference I see between two and four. Everybody else goes that way.
But you were trying to combine them. So what else, Skip, do you think you can put in hers to combine so we don't use up a goal?
Well, you can combine them, put them together, saying, you know, we're going to drive student interest or whatever through the listen and learn forms for five through 12, they're sat in internet.
And add the students.
Just do listen and learn as one, one topic and just combine the two statements together, right? Right, so two bullet.
So listen and learn four in district, and listen and learn the other.
Right.
Combined with what you wrote, right?
So it's, it's a goal, or it's sub-goal, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Objective.
We still get it.
It's an objective.
I would object it, yeah.
They're going to be on the one, one section.
So I just wrote it up there.
Okay. So the, the key's on here, on what Dr. Pereira gave you, number two is a goal, everybody's in agreement with that?
So what she, what she gave us here, she's going to combine that into this and that's a goal?
Yes.
Yes.
So Dr. Pereira, you're gonna need to send this stuff to me.
See, I can do the, okay.
Yep, so so far I'm adding a percentage to student achievement and I'm rewording goal number two. So so far we have two goals.
Right.
This is one.
What percentage do we put? Because I didn't write down.
Well, I have to rework it. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, then if you look at the next page.
Maybe we can do goal number five.
Oh, we had five, oh, we had five.
Facilities and finance. And.
So I did not write a goal for.
That's a continue. That would be, Dr. Pereira's recommendation is to continue with goal number five, facilities and finance.
Not quite. I, I'm saying continue because it's obvious, but we have a lot of financial challenges. So I just wanted to ask the board if they wanted to add to that or go in a different direction. Because we are making progress on private tuition. In fact, we just, we have two more in the middle school.
At what rate? At what rate?
3,500. Uh, 3,500. Because they're staff first children. So is that something, is that a facilities and finance goal that we're interested in?
Make the revenue goal and then have the sub-goals, like revenue goal instead of the objective?
Well, that would be the revenue goal. So like we're trying, we've been talking about forever getting the grant writer in so we can like make specific amounts or attempts to get these goals checked off.
And also what I was interested in, I don't know who else would even be interested in it, more of a facilities goal concentrating safety and security in the buildings. So would that be a separate one or?
No, that could fall under facilities and finance.
Can you elaborate on safety and security in the buildings?
Safety and security.
At all times or during school?
All the schools. I, I just, as a personal reference, I know a lot of students are using different doors to go in and out. We spoke about staff members signing in and out during the days. Because if there's a bomb threat, if there's a fire, we don't know where Dr. Pereira will be. We don't know where, if a board member's in a building. So to beef up safety and security in case there is a threat.
And I would add another layer to that, safety, security at evening times too. Because we have kids in the building and we not, we can't forget about, I mean, concentrate.
How many times I pull up art lab to come to an event and that back door to locker room, new chairs sitting their waist over.
Correct. And to piggyback on that, we were coming from a negotiations meeting and parents for dance had the door propped open, totally propped open. Front door, yes. So I don't know how we can combine everything, but I think safety and security is very important.
It can be a number of, it can be a factor underneath facilities and finance.
That's what we're looking into, scanning parts.
So but so far we have two goals. Two district goals. This will be our third. This will be our third. Unless we want to break that out a little bit into a revenue and a sa, I think to safety and security.
I, I think so, they're biggies. Revenue's big and so is safety and security.
Well, if we just keep it under finance, that'll save a whole bunch. Finance and facilities, it's facilities.
You guys are getting so hung up on the number five.
Well, you know why? Because we all would like to participate in the number.
I don't want you to do that. I want, let's think about what you want to see happen and what you want to focus on in the upcoming year. And then we can figure out.
Okay, so last thing.
How to combine things.
All right, well, we need revenue, that's for sure. And we need safety and security, that's for sure. So should we break out revenue from facilities?
So let's do an overarching finance and facilities goal that, what would you like that to be? To investigate additional, you know, resource avenues, additional avenues for resource, for, for revenue and maintain.
So I think it should be, continue to explore different opportunities to bring revenue into the district. One being tuition-based programs, two being grant rates.
What about like food services? I know there's potential there. We have a new food service director. We were in the negative for a long time, now we're kind of building up.
The number food services is a, I'm trying to think of it right out of my head. It's enterprise. So that is, it's like its own separate category. So I don't think that that should be a goal for us. It operates in and of itself. In other words, for the past two years, when federal government's been paying for school lunches, you know, it put it, it put us in one category.
Right.
And so I just think because it sits on its own, that it should not be a goal.
Does it cost us money every year? Not, not the COVID years, but typically, aren't we in the, in the red with them?
Yeah, but.
It's not this year.
No, because of COVID, I get that a lot. But before that, I think we were putting out more than we were taking in for years. So even if we improve that by 10% or, you know, increase revenue there, it'll still help us overall.
This is where I need Sharon.
Yeah, I know, we have like a food service director too.
In other words, you can't take the monies, the revenue that you make from food services and buy books.
No, I get that, yeah.
Right.
But it would help with the people who work in there with their benefits and things like that.
If it's costing us money, it's costing us money. So how can we even that out a little bit? So you're saying to make that, so wait, so we're in finance and facilities. We said that the overarching is continue to explore.
Continue to enhance the district.
Different avenues for revenue coming into the district and then an objective could be tuition students, ROTC.
And I'll figure out how to, how to word it, but overarching is continue to explore different avenues for revenue in the district.
Do you think kids could come to Lacey because we had ROTC? When they raised our hand at graduation with eight kids going into armed forces at graduation?
I'll say this, Bella's home for the summer, my daughter's name is Bella. She's been home for the summer and four of her friends are going away to the Navy, Army and Marines.
From Lacey?
After graduation, yeah.
Seniors this year.
Uh, no, they graduated already and they were looking for a way and their way was to join the military. So I think we have, and I'm guessing, yeah, I don't have any data to back it up, but my, I feel like I have a good pulse on what's going on in town. And it seems that we have a good mix of residents that use the armed services as a way out, whether it be police and firemen as well as, you know, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard.
Just what I'm saying is I just can't see somebody living in Bayville saying, oh, I'm going to Lacey, they have the ROTC.
I agree with that.
Saying, oh, I'm going to the ROTC.
They might have the room at Central. They have room.
Right, right, you know what I'm saying? That's why.
I just, coming from.
Did you just say?
Bayville has the room.
Yeah, coming from the finance committee the other day, I don't think at this point that might be, not be an achievable goal for Dr. Pereira because we don't have $120,000. So to set her up not for success, because we still are looking at the powers we need, the guidance counselor, so to make that a goal with no money, I don't see how we can do that.
So then we need to find a new way to drive revenue to the school. Again, backwash the last month.
That's what she's going, that's what she has to investigate.
But those are, this would be you coming up with these ideas. Continue to, well, we need us together.
Yeah, but I mean, like, yeah, so. But I guess like. All right, let's just say we did grant writing, which we've been talking about for a long time. So then the three-month goal, something like that that you would come up with would say, identify two community members to participate, right? So it's gonna be broken down when we can move them along.
Yeah, but let's just back up for a second. We have the overarching.
Yep.
Now I think we need two bullets under there. One is, um, what's the word?
Sounds like?
Do you want maintenance of facilities under, maintenance of facilities? Continued maintenance of our facilities underneath that?
Well, no, I was thinking about the grant writing piece first.
Okay.
Well, we already used the word explore.
That's a progress, we know, and that kind of fell with the leaving of the new ABA.
So I guess it should be something along the lines of develop and implement a grant rate or develop a grant writing committee as a way to bring revenue into the district.
That would be an objective.
What did I just say?
Develop the grant writing committee.
Develop, thank you.
That's objective, not a goal, you're saying, Mary Ann?
Right, yeah. Develop a grant writing committee to what?
The revenue number.
To.
And implement. It has to be an implement, we can't just have a committee.
I did say develop and implement a grant writing committee to.
So the facility bringing money into the district, I believe.
Something like that.
You can watch a videotape, but. There you want, there you want.
Okay, so that's the first sub of that, of the finance and facilities. And then the second one, because we said we're gonna separate safety and security, right, Mary Ann? Into maybe goal four? Because we're on goal three right now. What was the second part of finance and facilities?
The safety and security of all staff members.
Oh, maybe that could be the second bullet because it's facilities.
Yeah, it's not in the same group, just broken down.
So then how do we want to work that?
We want to come up with a, a plan, a, that to ensure safety, safety and secure, safety of all staff members and students entering the buildings and community members.
Improve the protocols, improve.
How about continue to review and revise protocols for safety and security and students?
And do, and something about nighttime too, and community member usage.
Wait, Mary, what did you just say? Continue to, oh, you're writing.
She's writing, talking.
Continue to review and revise protocols for safety and security for all staff, students.
And community members.
And community usage of schools?
Sure.
Because if you're saying community members, somebody could say, well, you're providing safety and security for me at my house.
Right.
That's not what we're doing. We're providing safety for the community when they're here in the building.
I like that.
At all hours, so we have to specify to the end.
Can we back up one moment if we can? With regards to tuition-based program, is that now centered around just the grant writer?
No.
No, the overarching is to continue to explore different avenues for revenue in the district.
So an example would be the grant writer, the.
But grant writers, someone on payroll, isn't it?
No, volunteer we're getting.
It's volunteer, okay.
And then, what was the other one we did? Oh, the, uh, district kids. So that's, no.
Tuition.
Right, and then is there any, any other ideas that we can, to bring in that?
We were talking about the academies, right, Ocean County.
Oh, I would love to expand Ocean County Academy, the OCC Academy, because that brings in money for us. So I, that, that really falls on Sharon.
And under finance and facilities.
Yeah.
So the third thing is?
No, that falls under the revenue. So there's three revenue points.
Right.
But no, no, we added, because this is finance and facilities. So we have develop and implement, grant writing, bring money into the district. And then we were writing, continue to review and revise protocols. What did you have there? Protocols?
Continue to review and revise protocols for safety and security for all staff, students and community in use of buildings.
And so what we're saying, a third bullet under this?
I don't know if we should like separate it, like if we're talking about facilities, then talk about the security and then under finance, talk about generating revenue. So under facilities, we can say, are there other points under security that you want to address? You know, have like a couple of points.
That's a pretty big one, so I would add another one.
And then under finance, we can address revenue and then there should be a couple of goals for revenue, two or three, I think.
Right, we have one, grant writing.
Grant writing. OCC Academy could be one, if everyone agrees. And there would, what was the other one?
Safety and security.
It was.
Expand OCC Academy.
Programs.
So that was OCC Academy.
Right.
And then.
Oh, they added district kids.
Right. The tuition-based program.
Right, so I have like, right, breaking down points.
So you're gonna have four objectives under.
I have four, yeah. Three finance, one safety and security.
Okay, so develop and implement a grant writing committee to facilitate successful achievement of grants?
Sure, to what?
Achieve successful, to facilitate successful achievement of grants?
To achieve success, for successful achievement of grants. For successful achievement of grants.
Okay, then, excuse me, continue to review and revise protocols for safety and security for all students, staff and community in the use of buildings, of school buildings, district buildings. And then expand OCC Academy. OCC is Ocean County Community?
Ocean County College.
We have a great program there.
And then what was the last one?
So kind of like.
The tuition?
What, continued, goal five on the original sheet, continue to enhance the district's tuition-based program
The goal with the student achievement, is there any way we could add to that and bring in class size to limit class size? Because I know the size of classes has a direct impact on student achievement. And I, there, there's some, I think if we limited the class sizes as a goal, that will definitely have an effect on that.
That's dangerous though, because we have no money. And if we have to cut staff, we have to increase class size. That's a fair.
Right, right.
And the only way to reduce class size is to hire more teachers. To hire more teachers, we need more money. We don't have any money.
Is, has it ever been looked at to use the three girls that we have as coaches though, to get down those class sizes? Because.
You mean to use it as teachers?
Yes, yes.
We need those coaches though. This is why.
I want more coaches.
The coaches are really important to improving student and improving student.
We have made so much progress.
Because teachers don't use data.
Where's the data showing the progress out of these coaches?
So commit, curriculum, when, we'll just present it, not, not this last meeting or the meeting tomorrow, but last month, those instructional coaches have spelled out, not only by class, but by teachers. Like we know exactly what teachers need to work harder and how they're gonna have to work harder.
Right, and I agree, I'm just concerned.
As you know, because your wife is doing data coaching.
Yes.
It, you know, it takes them, they're brand new in this job. It's gonna take them in here for teachers to feel comfortable to work with them and for the coaches to feel comfortable to get in there and get those, what the teachers are supposed to be doing. You know, you gotta work that relationship with the teachers and it takes time. But they're doing a great job from what I hear.
Great.
Right, but if we have 30 kids in a second grade class or 27 and 28, I, I just thought as a goal, we should limit them.
Well, I think that goal probably would come in with the redistricting. And I think that's, I know, I know we're doing that.
That's a goal.
But I think that, that goal is like, right now paramount for, for combining all our resources and bringing everybody to where they need to be in one place. So, you know, going back to Yogi, you know, if you know where you're going, you're gonna get there. And I think that, you know, if we can combine our resources and bring all our kindergartners and first grades together in one building and have everybody on the same page of what they're teaching, you know, and the same thing with our second and thirds and fourth through sixth, or whatever it might be, that, that's going to, to enhance our student achievement. Because everybody's teaching the same way in one building. And combining our resources, then we're gonna save money. And we, you know, we might be able to bring down our class sizes or whatever it might be. I think that is paramount to, you know, everything we're doing, you know.
So that was the last thing I was gonna mention as a potential goal and I wanted to ask Mary Ann.
We have an ad hoc redistricting committee and we have been exploring redistricting in order to accommodate the preschool expansion for universal preschool. Is that an appropriate goal?
It could be to continue to explore redistricting, redistricting options, you know, certainly. And then you would have, you know, activity, your ad hoc committee underneath that would be, you know, continually presenting information.
Yeah, I think that's so important, you know, and if we can get preschool for everybody in the town, just think of all the kids that, you know, they can't because their, their parents are working two or three jobs to keep, you know, ends meet. Because of inflation, there's something out there and they can't afford to send their kids to pre-K, you know, we're doing that and, and that's gonna bring, just enhance our, our kids' education and then get them on the same page of what we're teaching and, and stuff like that. I think that, you know, that, that universal pre-K and our, our redistricting is paramount to.
So what goal area, Mary Ann, would you say that that falls under?
Learner success.
Learner success, right?
So continue to investigate redistricting through.
Do you know what that is?
Well, when you say universal pre-K, what does that mean?
It means, that's a great question. It means that we would be offering free preschool to all three and four-year-olds in Lacey Township, which right now we do not.
Right.
All debt, right?
It's all random.
Full debt.
Certain three and four?
Three and four-year-olds.
I thought it was just four-year-olds.
Three and four-year-olds.
But we have children for four-year-olds, I thought, right? We only have the space if we did it, let's just say we do it tomorrow.
No, if we redistrict.
Right, we would have.
And we accept the grant, then it would be for three and four-year-olds.
So huge grants out, but there's a lot of stipulations that come with it.
But, and I'm sure.
A ton, like, a ton of stipulations come with it. Like, it wouldn't probably make money until after a year or two because you have to revitalize the schools, put new bathrooms in, build smaller bathrooms.
So what, what do you mean by make money?
Because we have to spend money to the grant. For the first year, we have to spend money to apply for the grant, correct?
If we did it now, correct?
We did it now, correct. And then the next year, we wouldn't have to spend money, we would just have the money coming in.
Right, from, by, from the grant.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, but in order to make money, you gotta spend money first, right? So I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like an investment that we need to make.
Wait, wait, I think we're refusing.
We're talking about different things. Okay, that's why I asked the question.
This is free, we're not charging tuition.
Right.
Right, because we would get.
Yeah, but we got the grant money coming in to do it.
Correct. We're not, so it's not locally funded.
No, no, I missed what you said, sorry.
Right, it's not locally funded, it's grant funded.
So do you have the grant already?
We do not. Because if we had applied for the grant now, we wouldn't have had enough money.
Or time to do it by September.
Or facilities, right, or time, correct.
But to me, I think that goal for next, next year, it's priority to get things
But now, we are talking about doing this for one school building would become
Right, redistricting.
Preschool, kindergarten, and first?
I forget what she
Well, that's, that's what the redistricting commise, because remember I showed the outline
Because then we, we came up with a different
A different option, which I haven't showed, we're meeting against tomorrow, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon.
Yeah, we are, so I'll present that, I haven't yet.
This may not be a moneymaker thing, but the fact of the matter is, it's going to be for student achievement, it's gonna be
Question with that Frank, has anybody done some research, like a school that had, I mean, it makes sense, you're starting them out younger, right, education younger, are their scores up because they're starting younger, does anybody know? Like those districts that have it now?
Yeah.
That's had a while, are their scores, because I know preschool is, it's coming to play this, let's play this with Johnny, let's play that game or whatever, you know what I mean?
Well, I can't answer
So, is it worth it to do all this work and go through redistricting to get for preschool for everybody, is it gonna advance or are we gonna get the money back in return is what I'm saying.
I personally, I don't know about the data, but I can't see how putting a child in pre-K and having a curriculum, you know, achieving curriculum for them, for not, for them not to advance.
It's not babysitting.
Right, so, it's not like, okay, go play blocks and then, you know, at the end of the day, there's a curriculum that this grant specifically has for this, so, to get everybody on the same page at three and four, how could it not advance our students and have them more prepared for the kindergarten years and if that's the case, then we don't have to look at, you know, DK or T1 because now all our children are having the three and four-year-old pre-Ks
Full day.
Full day, and they're ready for kindergarten when they come here, so how could it not help them?
And from an educator's standpoint, we can see the difference. When students come to us that went to an all-day preschool with their curriculum, we can see the difference because children come in at two different levels, they did preschool or they didn't.
Yeah, you can see kids at work, kids at work.
The teachers are paid for by the grant and we would save jobs through this grant, technically.
Well, we have to hire
Theoretically.
We have to hire people, we have to hire, there's like, there's so many stipulations.
Yeah, there's
You have to have a supervisor for this and that, a parent, a parent, you have to hire a parent?
With benefits?
To watch the program, I mean, the grant sounds wonderful, but the stipulations that Murphy put into this grant is just off service.
Sure, I guess, you know, we gotta go old school on it, gotta get a yellow legal pad out and write the pros and cons right down the middle and say, okay, is it worth it or is it not worth it?
But again
I mean, I'd say this, you know, to Frank's point, providing an education for a kid all day, sounds like a great thing, that would be outstanding and, but I don't, as great as it sounds, it still doesn't fix the problem.
So, when is the application due, to apply for next year?
So, this year was August ninth.
So, it'd be next year, same.
So, we missed it for next year or August ninth?
No.
No, all right, so that would be a good goal, because then we can
Yeah, we could look at that.
Do the progress.
And, you know, we also have to look at, you know, maybe we can't go all in with the pre-K and get that grant, but we could still make redistricting our priority and get, you know, we could save money and get everybody, and again, getting all our students on the same page with all the teachers in one building and their supervisors looking at this and saying, okay, we're all marching the same way with our curriculum, it's not like this building's doing that, this building's doing this, this building's doing that, get them all together and that's gonna be helpful too.
Does that happen now?
I have continued to explore redistricting options.
Well, are we, we're not here to discuss them right now, are we?
No.
Okay, so that's one, again, point one.
Okay, so, continue to explore redistricting options to provide universal pre-K. Okay, so that gives you four goals, okay?
What?
Three of them are student, learner success, the one about the
I have one, community outreach, I have two for student achievement, right?
What did you say, community outreach?
Community outreach was the listen and learn.
That's the listen and learn, so that's on here, that's goal number two that you're gonna reword, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's
Oh, I have it under learner success, so I see, but I can change that to community outreach and engagement.
Okay, and then student achievement?
Is the percentage I have to come up with.
For the fifth through
Question, is there any way we could add in SATs in that, that we will increase by ten percent on the SATs?
I was gonna say, school ranking, it's measurable.
And SATs is measurable also, because, just because we've been talking about the SAT scores as long as Linda's been here, no.
So, then I would suggest making an overarching student achievement goal to improve student achievement through the following objectives and then the fifth grade through eighth grade, math, and WEA, you could do SAT as an objective and you could do school ranking as an objective, that's something that you all wanna do.
And then what's, what's the overarching then?
To improve student achievement, to improve overall student achievement.
And list those three metrics.
To improve student achievement. It's the overall student achievement. Improve overall, through, and then That would be one.
Through the following?
Yeah.
I wasn't born.
That would be five through eight, right?
NWA five through eight, NWA math five through eight, because that's our weakest.
And SATs, can we have that measurable, is ten percent sound measurable, does it sound achievable?
I'd have to go back and look.
Or, or something like You want it to be a
Yes, I mean, it can be a little bit of a reach, but you don't wanna say we want to, you know, increase by twenty-five percent. Correct, we want to be successful, right.
How about like above state average or state average? I think we're a little below state average, so, I don't know the exact numbers, but something like that.
Yeah, let me take a look. And what was the third? So, NWA math five through eight, SAT scores, and what was the third?
State rank.
Oh, the ranking.
No, you said to report
School ranking. No, ranking.
Rank.
Like, we're two, where are we at now, two seventy?
Well, is that gonna correlate to our scores increasing?
Yeah.
So, is that really, so really, is it
Well, because there's ways to do it, if attendance is tied to it, there's certain ways that we can
Graduation rates.
Graduation rates tied to it, so if we can figure that out, yeah, it goes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So. Linda had a call. And I'm really sorry because I literally have to be out here at three-thirty.
Okay.
I'd like to say up one thing, I really would like to see somewhere in our goals to, for an inclusive community with special ed, we talked about this in curriculum with special ed parents, making more, special ed more inclusive with regular ed, I don't know if there's any way, because that would improve test scores too, I'm sure, if they were all inclusive, I don't know if there's any place we can put that, but
Both community achievement.
Yeah, I don't know where
But we only have four goals, make it five.
I have
Why not?
You're putting, you're putting an awful lot on Dr. Pereira's table. I just want you, I just want you to realize that because these, these are very, very
Don't say that.
One of these goals we've all been talking about for a long
These are very non-goals, it's a lot and you want her to succeed, you want her to have the ability to achieve these things, so, there may be some things that get worked on that are not going to be stipulated as, as actual goals and let me type up everything and we'll talk to, you and I'll talk tomorrow and get everything typed up and then you'll take a look at it and you may say, you know what, this is, this might be too much.
No, I think we leave it on there too much and if she can't reach it, if she got the other one's done easier, it's another place to go, step it high, if you don't make it, you don't make it, right?
Well, those
Make a high step, rather than lowering the bar, raise the bar, if you get to it, then you can put the other to it.
I'm not saying to lower the bar though, I'm sorry, I'm not saying to lower the bar, I'm just saying what will be achievable in one year, that's all that I'm, that I'm talking about.
Yeah, one year's a short time, we're already started in a year.
I like Kim's approach to real specific numbers to what we're targeting for improvement and I think if we can get real specific numbers of what we're targeting as improvement, the number of goals we have isn't, you know, as important as us actually achieving the goals with real specific
It's still, we accomplish it, we see the numbers.
Yeah, so why don't we type up what we have and see where we are?
Some of these goals have already started, you know?
And just keep in mind inclusive
Right, it's not like a year.
So, we have
We did district
We have our board goals.
We have no board goals at this point, okay, but we have four district goals, right? You and I'll talk in the morning.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to another district, so I can't type up anything tonight anyway.
Can we read, can we do this again?
We can do it again, or if you would like, we can quickly come up with, you know, it depends on, if you wanna spend a lot, if you wanna spend more time on this, I can come back.
Yeah.
Would you rather, rather be rushed, would you like to sit down, come back another time and come up and put pen to paper, Sal would say, to your ideas, what you want individually and then we could, our goals, how's that? We have another deck.
And I think that's a nice idea because everybody will get a chance to really review the self-evaluation and take a look at what kinds of things
Yeah, I think rather than rush, we do it
Yeah, what kinds of things you would like to include in any kind of training or professional development for yourselves.
So, should we set a tentative date up?
I don't have my calendar, we'll talk tomorrow.
Okay, and did this time work for everybody?
Well, it's
Yeah, but summer's over.
No, I have it, September is not gonna work, he's gonna be back teaching and
But I can commit an hour before a meeting, I can commit an hour before a meeting and we can do the board goals and then we can go right into your
But doesn't it have to be in public?
Yeah.
So, we could open it up.
So, you would open it early?
We'll advertise at five o'clock.
Yeah, you do your meetings at six?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, today, right.
Yeah, so we could do it, we could do that at five, you would open at five, you would advertise that you're doing, you know
To do board goals.
Board goals at five, development of board goals from five to six and such
Do we fill this out for you?
I have, can I have one more goal, possibly? We only have four, we were told five.
No, one more, and you're in the sixteen.
No, we weren't told five, we were
All right, wait, just listen, okay.
Put it out there for us to think about it, we might eliminate, no one put that in there.
All right, listen, well, guidance, I think in that, it'll be achieved easily, we have a new person coming in, but I think it still needs to be an overall broad, broad goal.
But that can fall under student success and student learning or learner success.
Wait, Kim, what did you say?
Guidance, and we've done so much and now we're having a new guidance counselor come in, but I'm still hearing from the public that they're not getting training in college applications and they're not knowing the dates of things, SATs, things like that, so, overall, how do we improve that as a goal?
Can we just, in committees, task Dr. Pereira to have an action plan for the new guidance supervisor?
Whatever works.
Instead of making it a goal?
An action plan sounds good.
Right?
Well, an action plan though has a negative connotation.
It's not a corrective.
Well, I know Mr. Decker did one a couple of years ago, he had the action plan, something like that.
Yeah, but that wasn't for the person, that was for the program, so, we could do something like that.
Okay, instead of a goal, just
Yeah.
You let us know what you're going to do.
Well, that's something I'm gonna put Will on.
Yeah.
And then if you can somehow bring Linda's in too, because that's so important, the inclusiveness, I, I know from the public, there's been so many people approaching us saying we need to include our special needs students more, so if we
Well, even C-Peg
Focus on that a little bit.
That was a big thing at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
All right.
All right, so, we're all good then, we'll have another
So, the action, it's just up on the screen, what the action plans look like, again, you have it in your packet, you also will either have some kind of a brightly colored piece of paper on the left-hand side that's the evaluation process counter, so, some of you have like a bright yellow, some of you might have a bright blue or pink, fluorescent pink or something, Sal, can you hold that up? So, it looks like that way to, this whole, it's like that, I know, on the left-hand side, it's probably a different color though, because I ran out of You don't have that one?
Oh, it's in the right side, in the very back there. Oh, so sorry.
Okay, so, that's something that, that I know we'll see each other before you reorganize, before, you know, January, but that's something that you're gonna wanna fill out in January, okay, to make sure that then everybody's on the same page to when the those updates will happen and just, you know, as a point of reference too.
Careful.
If you have on your, on your agenda for the night, that the district, you know, an update on the districts and the board goals and they don't get to happen because it's a crazy night and you've got a whole bunch of other things happening, everybody needs to say, okay, we need to make sure we put this on our next agenda then, okay? It's not just up to the board president to make sure, everybody needs to make sure, okay, you know what, we didn't get to do it, it's an I understood, I understand why, couldn't be avoided, but we need to get it on the table next month, okay?
So, Mary Ann, we're, hopefully, the September board meeting, you'll come back because, so we can get the goals done, right?
We're gonna try and get that done as quickly as possible.
This September meeting, hopefully.
Well, we're gonna try, yeah, I'd like to do that, yeah, we're getting it done sooner than later. The board goals, yes, I'd like to get that done sooner or later.
Yes.
President Pleno, can we continue this meeting after she leaves?
Well, we do have, we have to finish our agenda, so, we can still be discussing what you do.
What are some board goals, like, what are some things?
So, some board goals could be
Just examples.
To achieve board certification, yeah, there are some examples on the back of the action plan, it could be to complete the superintendent's evaluation, you know, according to statute, statutory time frames, it could be for
Right here.
You know, to review and revise, make sure that, you know, that there's a continued review and revision process for your, for your policies, that kind of stuff, if you were not happy with your particular committee structure, your governing structure, boards can sometimes look at their committee structure and see if they wanna switch it up at all, so, you know, things like that.
And that can be changed anytime during the year, just not at the reorder meeting?
Usually, you're gonna look at it and you're gonna see and then usually you would change it at reorder, so, if you wanted to think about doing something, now would be the time to think about it and then propose it potentially at reorder.
And you provided us some samples, I saw.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You take that.
I'm going to take this out.
Okay, thank you, Mary, I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much for your time, I'm sorry that I have to run.
Thank you.
So, Skip, I don't know what you wanted to continue on with as far as you thought you wanted to go on with goals or points or
Yeah, we actually, I just feel that we're all together, it's a quiet atmosphere, everybody's going well and just add personally what you feel you should be, what goals you want the district to achieve without somebody, give somebody, board member a minute or two, that's fine.
Well, we have a board conference, how we throw it under there.
Okay.
How's that, fine.
Okay.
Is that everybody's, yes?
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, so, I'm just gonna, you know, start it to the next thing, there's no public conference, there's nobody here, so, we'll just go ahead to the board comments, so, you wanna start, Kim?
Sure. No, I think this was helpful and I think we're on the right track and I just want things to be measurable so we can hold ourselves accountable, hold you accountable and it'll just, I think, help progress things, so things will get, put some of this up, that's all.
Good, I think it was a good meeting, the one concern that this keeps on going through in my mind is, you know, we're trying to raise our amount of students coming to the districts, we're trying to get tuition students coming in and I feel that for the amount of money, what we're charging, correct, we're really not getting anything on that return because now we need extra bussing, now we need extra teachers, now we need extra food, now we need the extra this or that and for thirty-five hundred dollars for the employee students, correct, but then what is it if you're not
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, I mean, that
They bust themselves.
That just, that for the amount of time and effort that we're putting in there to bring in seventy-five hundred dollars, when we're millions of dollars in deficit, I would rather push more towards grants and other ways, we discussed in the way about advertising on buses, advertising upfront, I think financially it would bring in a lot more money and once you do it, it doesn't affect any other employees, it's not taken away from it, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, we talked about class sizes, I know that some of these electives have six or seven kids, right, then you got Woodshop that has twenty-eight and the same teacher's making the same salary teaching thirty kids as eight kids in French class or whatever it may be, so, rather than if we have a low number of students in a class, eliminate that class and take that money and put it somewhere else, because you got Because you got that teacher with thirty kids in home mech or sewing or Spanish, whatever it is, and then German, or whatever, you know, I don't know what electives we have, low, low numbers, three or seven or eight kids. The other aspect is too, a lot of the higher-end math classes have a low number of students, and the English class has a lower number of students. So maybe incorporate some other kids, like I used to do the math program, the multiage classroom thing, take, if you wanna lower the numbers down, it's a great idea, correct? Take some of those kids out of that program that has thirty kids, and push maybe five or six or more into that class, you know what I mean? Put a little bit of support or something, try and bring the class sizes down. I agree one hundred percent, class size is a huge factor. You come from a very small district, maybe, what, fifteen kids in class?
I had eighteen.
Right, you know, and that's it, you know? It's a small town she came from, and I think that's huge.
Galway's huge, I'm sorry, Galway's huge, but their goal was small class sizes.
Right, well, unfortunately, you know, we can't do that with our finances right now. But I'm looking at other aspects to lower them down a little bit, you know? Let's see the numbers for each class.
Well, I think that's coming out.
Tomorrow, we requested it during the curriculum committee. Mr. Zalinski is going to give us a list of class sizes tomorrow.
And every schedule's already made already for this year? Okay.
So we'll share it.
Yeah, because we're continuing our committee meeting from last week to this week, so.
So as far as the aspect, I'm not trying to be myself, but I feel if we do the tuition thing at seventy-five hundred dollars, now all teachers gotta work a little harder for that kid. If we do, you know, the thirty-five hundred dollars, the teachers have to work a little harder, it's a little more administration, a little more guidance, a little more of this, more of that, but your investments, the grant writer writes a grant, boop, one dime, the grant's done, no investment worth, out of us. Boop, we put signs on the buses, advertising, boop, pay the sign company, put it on once, it's done, it's got income coming in every year. So that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Like us, this will go around table?
Yeah, I think we, I think the thing that I saw in some of the comments, if I read them right, that I just like to agree with, is we tend to get information to last minute. Like, for example, the curriculum committee is meeting tomorrow, and among other things they're gonna discuss the redistricting and a couple of other things, and we'll get that information to vote on, and I think we need a more open forum to be able to discuss it. In other words, we've got the information that's gonna be on the agenda, and sometimes with a lot of things we get, we're sort of just left hanging with, without having an open forum, and that's the problem with the committee forum, is that we're not, like here, we're all being included in the conversation. Our committee forum board doesn't allow for that in too many things. I just think it's something we need to think about.
I believe that's why we added that extra time, the way we changed it, so we can talk.
Right, in our meeting.
Yeah. The districting is a separate committee.
Right.
Oh, no, but I'm just saying, those concepts, too many times we're left at the last minute with being given information, because.
Well, and then to just, and just go back on that, we are, but we aren't, because when the committees have their meetings, the minutes are posted on Dr. Pereira's.
Right, we get to see it, but we, you then get to see it. If you're not one of the three people on the committee, if you're one of the other four people, you get to see it, but you don't get to discuss it.
Right.
You get to see it, you get to form, you get your opinion, but you don't hear where that came from, and what discussion took place. Sometimes when I disagree with things, and I hear what other people have to say, then I agree with it, because now I understand where it's coming from.
Right.
But when I just look at it, sometimes it becomes more difficult to see what were you thinking?
Do you wanna border the whole, is that what you're thinking, or?
I would prefer that, personally.
I agree.
I would too.
And I have said that from the beginning, that I thought.
Or at least one meeting a month or something, where we can do a roundtable.
Right, which is one of the other thing I had said, is that instead of just having one meeting, we should have one meeting that is just discussion, sort of like caucus, open caucus, where we sit with the public, they wanna be here, we hear what they have to say, then we just sit and we just talk about the things that are gonna come up, so we hear everybody's opinion, and everybody's input.
The week before the meeting?
Week before.
We used to have, back in the day.
Yeah, that's the way it used to be.
We used to have agenda meetings the week before the meeting.
Right.
And then people every complained about being out two nights a week.
Well, I'm not gonna complain about that. It's gonna make us a better board.
I didn't say you were.
No, no, I said I'm not gonna complain about that.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna complain, I know, but to make it so better board, I'm one hundred percent for that.
I loved it, I just thought, you know, you could ask all your questions, and you had a whole week to think about things and talk to the superintendent of your questions.
Right.
And the public gets a whole week to hear what you're thinking, and they get to hear your thinking, they get to hear what your thought process was to get there.
Right.
Which then, sometimes, it's like when we had the open meeting on the budgets.
Yes.
Those two meetings, they heard what we were thinking, they heard what our ideas were, they had very little questions afterwards, because they understood what the thinking was and what the process was.
Right.
Which is only, that's fair to them.
Like even with the new curriculum that's coming up, the health curriculum, you guys, I'm sure, have been.
Oh, yeah.
Going deep, or?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, well, I'm sure it's not.
We had a field trip the other day instead.
Yeah, so it'll, I think that would be helpful to discuss.
That's why we're not voting on this issue this month.
You know?
Tomorrow.
Well, shouldn't they communicate to the public that we're not gonna vote on it this month, so they don't have?
It was.
It's, no, it's for September.
September.
It's for September.
Oh.
There's a letter going out today.
But school starts in September.
Yeah, but they're not gonna teach it.
So if this doesn't, if people don't know what's coming in September, and they find out in September, we're gonna have another.
Well, we haven't listened and learned at the end of the month.
We could possibly have another storm on our hands.
Well, yeah, but there's gonna be the public forum too before that.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go back to our comments, so we'll let you get that air.
So, to clarify, I don't think Sal understands, the letter's going out today, the curriculum opens to the public, for them to review it, very much like it opened to all of you.
Okay.
And then the letter from Will, we wrote it on Friday, explicitly says that nothing will be taught until the public has had a chance to review, then the public will comment on the twenty-fifth, then the board will review all of those comments, and then it gets board approved when we're ready. We're not ready till October, then we're not ready. Until then, nothing in those areas gets taught.
I can't believe we're even talking about teaching.
That's a whole nother conversation.
It's not simple, just say no, like Nancy Reagan said.
But not all of us are a hundred percent against all of it, Sal.
Go ahead, do you have?
Oh, sure. So, I agree that, I'm happy that we're doing, making some of the goals measurable, because then when we go to do the superintendent's evaluation, it's easier to, sorry, it's easier for us to fill it out, evaluate, if the goals are measurable, because the data's right in front of us. So I like that a few of the goals are measurable, and if, at any time we can work on class sizes, it's so important, so important. I was shocked in May when we found that there were thirty kids in a second grade class last year. That just hurt, that hurt so badly, and we didn't know that. So I think tomorrow we requested to see what the class sizes are, I think curriculum chair, Mrs. Downey, maybe we can ask again in November, January. I think as a board, this is something that we should look at, at all times. Same with what Mr. Peters said, yes, if a class has four or five students, and another has thirty, how is that helping the teacher or the students learn? So I think that is something the board can do without micromanaging or managing day-to-day activities, but that's something the board should be doing, is looking at class sizes. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, I just really like this format, I think it's important, I just feel this board doesn't communicate well at all, as we all have said. It's not something I said, we all said it, I really like this a lot. One thing I would like is, and I don't wanna put extra work on your plate, or maybe Sharon's plate, can you find out from other districts approximately how much they make on, like grants that they get, for example, the buses, how much do they actually make with the advertising on the buses? I know Patrick looked into that one.
He did, he has numbers. He said it wasn't.
It was about sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Advertisement on buses.
Yeah.
Just that.
And any other ideas that other districts may have? I know you go to the, what?
I'm just doing the math, figuring out, seventy-five hundred a kid, how many kids we have to bring in, we have to teach.
Yeah, I just wanna know what other districts are bringing.
So just for that?
No, and what other grants, like, what have they, I know you go to the Ocean County, and so does Sharon, though, right?
Yeah.
She does.
Her directors.
They could get ideas from, I mean, we keep talking about the same things, you know, the buses, or this or that, maybe they have some other ideas too.
Yeah, if you're checking out the amounts that is brought in for advertising on buses, also find out how many buses are involved.
Okay, like Tom Jiver has a district huge.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, if you can't compare, Tom Jiver, I'm breaking it down to the actual number of vehicles.
I guess the old, the old saying is, if you have more money than you had yesterday, it's a good number.
I'd say you're not to do it, I'm just saying, you don't wanna have unrealistic expectations too, that's all.
I'm sorry, I'll let you finish.
I'll read your comments.
That's it.
So, I thought this was great, you know, as a board member who's not involved in any
committee, to sit here and hear how you guys all think about the process and the procedure that goes behind all the decisions we make, I found it very valuable to me. I love the idea, I'm really grateful, Kim, that you kept bringing up measurable goals, real numbers, so, you know, measurable goals, attainable goals, those are things that are important if we're gonna turn the district around. I think we have a lot of good ideas, I mean, and, you know, the magic word that came again, I don't have to give you credit, is we gotta implement it, you know? It's great that we're talking, but now the plan is, how do we implement it, and how do we succeed in getting it implemented without making too much work, and not just to you, but for your entire staff, right? Because if we overload our administrative staff, they're just gonna be overwhelmed, and it's gonna look like we did nothing. So I think we have to figure out, right, and priorities, is what is really priority to us, and how do we measure that goal? And then where do we get that number from, and is that number realistic to everyone that sits on this dais or in this room today? And then we say, this is the goal, and then we do all we can to make sure that we achieve those goals, and I think that's the story we have to tell. I think we need to do a better, better job telling the story. I'm gonna use an example I had in a room with you and you, when Mr. O'Dowd explained facing it to me. Well, there's a lot of good stories behind that, but we don't tell the public that good story, and I think that's something we should tell the public, so they know that it's not just us lowering the standard, or giving a child or a student a pass, it's an opportunity to help that student reach the next level, and here are some examples of how we did that. And I think that's the key, is how we, how we deliver the message, and do it in a way where we're giving them real-life scenarios. So, you know, this was great, I'm grateful that I sat in this room today, it was very helpful to me, a lot of data here that, you know, aha moments for me, and so I'm glad I was here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so first of all, I wanna thank all of you for participating during the day, I really appreciate you coming out for the retreat. I know it's really tough to get everybody in a room in the daytime, I know it's gonna change in the fall. If, you know, if you folks are in favor of this agenda meeting thing like the week before, I certainly will speak to Dr. Pereira, and if you guys are all on board with that, maybe we can make something happen and have this open forum, maybe not change us as a committee board, but just have that extra meeting or something. I know it's a lot for all of us, but if you're willing to do that, then we certainly can look into getting that done.
Wait, I'm not hearing you, we're gonna try and do a committee of the whole?
No, I think you wanna do just a agenda meeting as a whole, correct? Is that what?
We used to do it like a week before, so we always had Monday meetings, so our agenda meeting was the Monday before. Now, the only thing that you would have to have a tentative agenda, so that we could go through the guidance.
But then does that replace committees?
No, 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 no.
So we wanna do two meetings plus all of our committees?
Yes.
Two meetings amongst, plus January's. What do you mean, two meetings?
You do a meeting on? I think it's definitely a meeting.
Well, you guys are saying committee of the whole, it's not committee of the whole.
No, no, just a meeting like this, where each person talks.
I don't think you can.
I think they told us you can't do both.
Why can't we call a board retreat every Monday before the Thursday meeting?
We'll have to look into it, we have to, we have to talk, we'll talk with our lawyer, look into it, but as long as it's announced in the paper?
Yeah, we can meet.
It's a public meeting, we can set a meeting of.
You're saying special meetings every month, that's what the name was? Yes.
Well, we'll look into it, well, certainly, and, you know, we'll see where.
So then we would do our committee meetings, and then come here, and we can openly discuss, but not vote on.
Well, we would have our, go through the agenda, and then, like we do at a regular meeting, curriculum gives their report, we could talk about curriculum, we could talk about.
So you might make it our general public meeting, sure, because we've already.
Yes.
Right.
And what that would do is that you wouldn't have people sitting there for hours when we do our student presentations, it would all be done in that other meeting.
Correct, and we're not questioning a bill, that's the time to question a bill, not when you're voting and asking for an explanation, you know, what's this?
Honestly, then what I'm thinking, I'm hearing you say, is that instead of doing a special board meeting, that we have one meeting before the regular meeting where we take action.
Correct.
Where we talk about curriculum, we talk about finance, we talk about policy, it might take us three, four hours, but at least we get it all done.
There were meetings that we were there fifteen minutes.
But that's the regular meeting, because we got it all out.
No, an agenda meeting, fifteen minutes, we got, nobody really had any questions, we, but that's back in the day when everybody could talk freer than we can now.
Right.
And then.
Because they're public meetings, open public meetings.
And then, you know, we'd go into the agenda, and there might have been hot issues that we were there, I don't ever remember it going more than an hour.
You're familiar with the agenda meeting.
All right, so something we'll look into.
I'll have Sharon explore different options.
And so the other thing is, my comment, and because we're here as a group, and I wanna tell you, we've kind of hinted on this in finance and stuff like that, if we're going to look at changes in this district, and redistricting, and doing pre-K or whatever, and stuff like that, it's a twofold thing. With the word referendums coming to mind, we, our solar panels are coming to an end in three years. So what that means is that they're not gonna stop functioning, but we're gonna stop getting revenue from them. The only thing we will get is probably a portion of our electric for free, okay? So we need to start considering what we're going to do with those solar panels, and with that is gonna be coming roofs, because the roof's gonna have to be redone, and then we need to start, you know, with the redistricting, if we, with that referendum, maybe additions or upgrading of certain facilities to do what we wanna do. So start thinking about that.
Six, seven, eight in the middle school.
Right, well, that's, that was one thought, so, but if we're going to do, if we're doing a referendum to do our solar panels, we should look at a referendum to bring our district up to two-twenty-three, two-twenty-four year that, you know, start looking ahead, if we're